Good evening and welcome to City Council. I'd like to read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they share this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared land of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restored justices for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, please call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Tonight, we have a reading by Councilmember Bingle. A proclamation.
Yes, and this issue is pretty near and dear to my heart as a former financial professional and coming from Rogers High School, really hoping that we can help to increase some financial literacy in some of our neighborhoods to help people understand how credit works, how money works, to where when they're coming out of high school, they've got a deeper understanding of how the system works. Whereas residents of the city of Spokane continue to emerge from the financial impacts of the COVID-19 global pandemic, and whereas the Spokane City Council recognizes that personal financial capability contributes greatly to the economic stability and well-being of all citizens, and whereas financial literacy education greatly contributes to increase personal financial capability, and whereas parents, educators, faith communities, labor unions, nonprofit organizations, financial institutions, employers, government agencies, and others are active and important partners in personal financial capability. And whereas this being April 15th, known commonly as Tax Day, special recognition ought to be given to the residents or outer community who have served as VITA or Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, volunteered in service to their neighbors. Now therefore, I, Betsy Wilkerson, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Financial Literacy Month in Spokane and encourage all community members to participate in programs and activities that increase their personal financial capability.
Even the City Council.
That's right.
Financial literacy. Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. We're going to do some votes on our boards in commission, and we're going to take the Human Rights Board first. So there are two members on the Spokane Human Rights Board, Susan McFadden and Curtis Robinson. We will take those two together.
Can I request we take those separate, please?
Yes, we can. We'll take those separately. The first one on the Human Rights Commission we'll be voting on will be Curtis Robinson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. The next person is Susan McFadden. All those in favor of Susan, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Thank you. On to the CHHS Board. Our first one up for vote is Christabel Aggie. All those in favor of Christabel, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? Great. The next one is Flora Castanina. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Nay.
Any abstentions? That passes. James Randall. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? James passes. The next is Carolyn Yu. All those in...
Can I actually speak on Carolyn? So Carolyn was in here earlier today, and I think Carolyn's going to be an excellent addition to our CHHS department because she's going to bring a wealth of knowledge from an industry that I think needs to be pretty heavily involved in CHHS, which is, you know, as a private developer, I think that this is a voice that's often lost in that. And so today, I asked her a number of questions that I thought she answered them really well, and so I'm excited to vote for her tonight.
All those in favor of Carolyn Yu, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? No. Any abstentions? That passes. And the last is West Anderson. All those in favor of West, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention. West passes. Thank you, Council. Under our new structure, you know that we do not read our consent agenda. Ms. Fister, if you will take us on to the legislative agenda.
Did you want to vote first and take testimony on the consent agenda?
Do we have anyone up? We do, thank you. We have two tonight. We have Dennis Flynn and Justin Haller.
I'm so sorry, Council President. I forgot that we have somebody here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. If you'd hold on for a minute, Dennis. Who was that, Mr. Bingle? Councilmember?
Sheri Richardson. Hi there, Sheri. I thought I saw you in the back there.
Come on down. Come on down, Sheri.
Did you want to come down and accept it?
And please, if you have a couple of words, we'd like to hear them.
I just want to say thank you. I'm Sheri Richardson with Junior Achievement of Washington. And on behalf of all schools and students, we appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Big fan of Junior Achievement. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Bingle, for that. Dennis Flynn and Justin Haller.
Hi, Council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles regarding OPR 2022-0344, Technical Services for the PMO and IT Projects. Maybe there's some specialty expertise that Arch Staffing and Consulting Company provides that makes them uniquely qualified, but if not, I do question why we wouldn't choose a local or at least a Washington-based company to provide technical services and supportive project management office and information technology projects. If these are really just technical services that aren't specialized in one area that Arch Staffing and Consulting is an expert in, we have capable firms in local Spokane to provide these services, and a bunch of that money would come back in sales and property taxes. Thanks.
Thank you. Justin, welcome.
I'm Justin Haller. I live in District One. And I echo some of the things that the former person said. I'd like to see more local people be hired, and I'm sure that there are some talented people that would like to have the money that you guys waste, I mean, spend on things. And furthermore, if we could get better negotiation and better value for our money, that would be great because without any competing things locally, I don't think we give people locally a shot. And I'm sure there's a plethora of people to choose from locally. With extra local on top. Also, the 12 million for the parks, can we scale that back? We're 50 million over budget. So if we're 50 million over budget, maybe we don't have money.
Justin, we're speaking on the consent agenda?
What's that?
We're speaking on the consent agenda.
Well, I do not consent.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. You guys keep wasting our money on useless stuff. And I don't see any of the five of you that are in lockstep, which lockstep is a very dangerous thing. It happened during World War II where this German guy with a goofy mustache taught people to do lockstep. It was pretty horrible. The brown shirts, look it up. N-A-Z-I, I think it was... Anyway, being in lockstep with the agenda is scary because you don't look individually at things. And I'd like you to each look individually at things and maybe go harder against the mayor like you did the last mayor, and maybe we shouldn't have $192.5 million tax levy against the citizens, further penalizing them while you won't allow SPD to do their job now, and then she's going to use scare tactics, and you're going to allow that? That's horse pucky.
Thank you. Any council commentary on the consent agenda? All those, any council commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? The consent agenda is passed. Ms. Fister.
Ordinance C-36506, as amended, amending ordinance number C-364627, passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, and entitled an ordinance adopting annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2024, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in various funds to make grading associated pay range changes for various positions as more specifically described in the ordinance. This action arises from the need to adjust pay ranges to align with salary analysis.
We have two commentaries, Justin Haller and Dennis Flynn.
I'm going to echo what I said before. You guys just keep wasting money. You know, during the pandemic, you wouldn't meet in person, and there was only one person who stood up and said, you know what? This is an edict, not a law, and didn't want to wear masks, and allowed to... and put the idea in the heads of the people like, maybe this is ridiculous. Maybe... Because the five of you, and I know one in particular who worked for a baby-killing factory, is all about my body, my choice. But then, on the other hand, you're like, oh, no, 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 no. We have to force you to do this. We have to force you to do that. Where's our choice? You don't listen to us.
Justin, which one are you speaking on?
All of them. The waste of money. That's my consistent message. You guys waste money on useless projects. You keep doing graffiti removal, but you won't arrest the people doing the graffiti. It's a waste of money. Everything you do is a waste of money. 90% of it. You've got $333,000 in overtime for fire department, but you won't hire more police department, but you won't hire more police. You sharpshoot them on what kind of guns they have.
How is this relevant to lowering the salary for a position at the city?
It speaks to the waste of money. You guys needed to go through the budget line by line and cut out the fat.
Lowering the salary for a position at the city is what this ordinance does.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's lower the salary. In fact, let's get rid of somebody who makes $100,000 through nepotism, through a former city council member who's married to one, who's a desparred lawyer. That's sketchy.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding C-36506, where you're declaring an emergency so you can pay some city employees more, recall the concerns I stated in February that a salary review commission will impose an undue burden on us taxpayers by falsely comparing Spokane to other parts of the country, and then call for significant raises in salary above what any of the rest of us ever get. I also remind you that public servants should expect moderate salary increases because of all the other generous benefits that the rest of us don't get, like twice-a-year raises. Yes, everyone gets a step increase every year until they hit their maximum, and then they get a cost of living increase every year, very generous health insurance, a plethora of paid holidays, sick pay and vacation pay, a generous pension plan backed by our tax dollars, the security of knowing you'll never lose your job because you all seem to think that our tax money is a never-ending trough, and already high salaries despite all these other benefits because previous councils misled us about needing salaries competitive to the private marketplace where people don't have many of these same generous benefits. The table included in the agenda includes nine positions that didn't have a previous salary, making it hard to see the percentage increase. Of the other positions, there are two getting a 2.5% raise, but there are six that are getting a low of 7.4% and a high of 10.1% raise. The only thing being lowered is a Budget Director for your office, who is going from an ungodly high $124,000 to $174,000 a year range to $84,000 to $118,000. The text also lies by saying personnel budgets will not be increased because you're paying for it out of currently vacant positions, saying it's not increasing budget increases into the future is a complete crock, and you know it. We have a budget shortfall in our city, but the answer we get from our mayor is to raise property taxes. And meanwhile, you all allocated commission to figure out how to give a large number of city employees a 7-plus percent raise. Where is the staff cuts and get over the threats of them only coming from emergency responders? Where is the elimination of unnecessary jobs in departments? Where is the return to sanity and cost-effective purchasing decisions instead of adhering to the current thing agenda? Where is the demand to remove the dicktop from federal and state grant funds that tie your hands on contracting and solution decisions? This last Sunday's gospel was about forgiveness and mercy, but also the responsibility of informing your brother and sister where he or she is going wrong, helping them repent and getting them back to the path of righteousness. Part of that includes giving benefit of the doubt that errors are made under the auspice of good intent because only God knows what's in your heart, and I'm willing to believe you're working under good intent. But I'm here to tell you that if you think you're going to lose people or not be able to fill positions because your already-high total compensation package isn't high enough, you're wrong. And you need to repent of wanting to confiscate more of our money and direct city leadership to find ways to cut like any other private enterprise would. You should oppose raising any salaries and instead oppose a salary and position freeze until the budget problems are restored. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, Dennis, I agree with you a lot on your commentary there. You know, we do have a pretty big budget deficit, and the thing that is being pitched to the community right now is that unless we raise your taxes a dollar per thousand, unless we raise an extra $40 million a year, then what we're going to do is we're going to cut 50 cops, we're going to cut 25 firefighters. And that's something where we, as a city, do need to find every way that we can tighten our own belt as families across the city and across the country are having to do. And so I am opposed to this one tonight because we need to be making serious strides forward in how we can reduce our spending as a city right now as every family in the city of Spokane is having to do.
Well, I'm in support of this. We're just not sitting here making up dollar numbers to give people raises. We are actually doing analysis competitively, not only in our city but across the state for similar jobs. The people you're talking about cutting their salaries are your neighbors. So if you want to tell your neighbor you're making too much money, you need to make less. You can do that. But as a city, we need the best people we can find to compensate them accordingly to their skill set. Yes, council is lowering the money on its Budget Director. We felt, as we looked at what we needed for council, that we did not need that skill set that we had previously, but we do need someone qualified, and we're ready to look at that going forward. So I'm in support of this. And if there's other council commentary, we're ready to vote. There we go. One more time. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-35, approving indemnification and defense of employees of the city of Spokane in the matter of the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Washington, cause number 223-CB0262-TOR.
Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, this is one where we just had some city employees doing their job on some apartment here in town, and they were named in the lawsuit. And so this is us providing them indemnification because they were doing their legitimate job here for the city of Spokane.
Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. Great, thank you.
Resolution 2024-34, declaring Hubert Technology Incorporated, Denver, North Carolina, sole source provider in authorizing the purchase of parts, supplies, and services for SE Eskomax Fine Screen and Hydro Press Washer Compactor Parts for the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility for a period of five years for up to $1,100,000 without public bidding.
Council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36500, granting non-exclusive franchise to use the public right-of-way to provide non-cable telecommunications service to the public to Zipley Fiber LLC, subject to certain conditions and duties as further provided. First reading held March 11, 2024.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36505, amending ordinance C-33671 that vacated the east 15 feet of Lacy Street from Gordon Avenue to 620 feet south, striking in Eastman.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. We're now in open forum.
Do you want to take a recess or go right into it?
I think we're going to go right ahead. We're going to go straight into it.
Okay, so we had 21 open forum signups. Our rules allow for 20 slots at open forum. So I am going to pull up an Excel spreadsheet that will randomize the list of names, and then I will sort them smallest to largest. And we will take the first 20 on that list, absent an adjustment made per the council rules that the people who have not spoken this month already get priority. So the last person on that list who has spoken this month already
While Jacoby's pulling up, Councilmember Bingle, like a point of personal privilege?
Yeah, a point of personal privilege. So my mom's in town today, and it's her birthday tomorrow, and I just want to say happy birthday, Mom. Love you. Glad you're here.
All right, so I'm pulling down the randomization formula here next to everybody's names and copying and pasting the values and then sorting smallest to largest. Tanya is last on the list, but Tanya did not speak last month. Glenn, or last week, Glenn is next, and he did not speak last week. Oh, okay. Thank you, Tracy. Are you sure? Okay, all right. Yep.
Thank you. Jay McPherson, born and raised in Spokane. A year ago this last July, my niece was murdered just one mile from here. The admitted murderer went along with the values of culture, believing it's okay to murder or use whatever violence is necessary to try to make your problems go away. He made a choice. In doing so, he usurped my niece's right to life. In acting this way, the murderer multiplied the problems of our grief-stricken family and forever disrupted the childhood of her two precious young daughters. I'm often up here trying to express the lies of Resolution 81 and the shameful deceit surrounding it. Tonight, however, I want to thank Spokane City Council for helping ensure justice in our community and encourage you to work for justice. Individual accountability is necessary when police officers act immorally. Individual accountability is also necessary when repeat offenders act immorally. This was the case with my niece's murder. Please avoid the temptation to look at people through the lens of prejudice. Last week, open forum was filled with repeated pleas for the city council to let prejudice guide your governance. Some guilty police officers do not make every police officer guilty. A couple deceitful city council members caught lying does not mean every city council member is guilty of the same dishonesty. Individual accountability is the opposite of prejudice, and prejudice is the opposite of individual accountability. It seems our biggest sins as a nation involve prejudice in some way or another. I find it disturbing that crimes like my niece's murder are treated so flippantly. The cheap sentence and the long-drawn-out process to investigate and prosecute these crimes cheapen human life. Somebody with a long rap murders an innocent mom, and we are shrugging our shoulders, labeling it as normal. Too few of us call for greater accountability for repeating offenders, but some want to make all police officers accountable for the actions of a few. This is severe prejudice and cannot be part of city government. Thank you for your support of the enforcement of just loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Next up is Tracy. You're going to skip tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Anwar, and then Justin Haller, and then Megra Flatman.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, and I'm the Chair of the Spokane Human Rights Commission. And I'm here to talk to you about SHRC Resolution 2023-3, a resolution concerning the human rights and basic dignity of individuals experiencing homelessness, which this morning I emailed the council about this matter. The reason behind this resolution comes from the commission in 2023 hearing from 18 subject matter experts on homelessness, housing, and public safety at our monthly public meetings, as well as the commission has received numerous complaints and testimonies from our homeless neighbors and friends at our public meetings about their concerns, about how their human rights and basic dignity have been affected while being homeless in Spokane. It was then, the commission then looked into other jurisdictions that have strengthened the rights of our homeless friends and neighbors in which we found in some parts of the country have passed laws called the Homeless Bill of Rights. The Commission Civic Impact Committee researched the issue on creating legislation around this bill of rights for Spokane. At least three states have passed laws affirming the rights of their homeless friends and neighbors in the following ways: the right to use public spaces without the fear of discrimination and harassment by law enforcement; the right to vote on legislation; the right to non-obstructive seek shelter in social service, legal aid, and education; the right to privacy of property in public spaces; the right to feel safe. The Spokane Human Rights Resolution requests that the city council create a framework of protections to address shelter inadequacies in operations within the city limits and add protections to the city municipal code for our society's most vulnerable people. The commission hopes that the council can see the importance of helping to make our homeless friends feel like they belong in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar.
Next up is Justin, and then Megra Flatman, and then Sheri Barnett.
My name is still Justin Haller, District 1. And I don't understand why you guys held back 2.5 million to clean up the city under Nadine's tenure, but all of a sudden, when a new administrator who you guys are in lockstep with and love, then all of a sudden, you administer the 2.5 million funds to clean up the city with another 4 million pending. I think that's pretty heinous, that you'll hold back money from one administration and give it to another administration, almost like it's a planned agenda to get someone out of office that you don't like. As far as that cleanup, if you go down Brown or Division, obviously didn't work. We still have a plethora of homeless people, and if you ever walk up and down there, you'll smell some wonderful smells, both liquids and solids, and you'll see needles. It doesn't work. What did work was the stop-and-sit law. That worked. Offer tough love. Don't let them create an ADA violation by blocking the sidewalk. And when you ask them politely to move, they tell you to mind your own effing business. That's not what you want for the expo, right? So how about you make it for the rest of the city the rest of the time? Covered just about everything else. Every other city that's gone woke has gone broke. Look at every other failed city: Chicago, New York, LA, San Francisco. Where has this libtard agenda worked? Where is allowing homeless to run the city and allow them to break laws? Don't let them suffer any consequences. Where has that ever worked? Show me where that's worked. Look at those cities. Look at them. It's all over YouTube. It's not hard to find. It's in the news every day. Look for that. Allow SPD to do their job.
Megra, can you hit star 3? Go ahead.
Thank you. I first became aware of the epidemic of homeless people in America only a decade ago, when I learned in 2014, almost half of all people living in the streets were American veterans, as documented by the Department of Housing and Urban Development's annual homeless assessment report. Most of these people returned from violent combat situations with PTSD and did not receive help. The Veterans Affairs denies more claims than they approve, and they deny more veterans who are not white than who are. Security.org's Homelessness in America Statistics Analysis and Trends article discusses the record number of people without homes or stability, and that number is still growing, both in 2023 and 2024. Veterans and people of color are still incredibly overrepresented and more likely to be homeless than white people. There are many ways to become homeless, but there are not many ways to reclaiming a shelter, especially in Spokane, where the city is spending more money on schemes that line pockets than provide exits to homelessness. We don't want to keep paying for this over and over. Range Media's big political donor bought the Trent Shelter location for the city 2023 article, details how Larry Stone has financially benefited from the city by charging outrageous rent, rent money that should be helping people escape homelessness. The Inlanders 2023 article describes about how the Salvation Army, who is currently running Trent Shelter, is not only charging the city more than Jules Helping Hands bid, but Jules Helping Hands included oversight for services necessary for getting people into housing permanently, so we don't have to keep doing this. As a fiscal conservative, I agree with Spokane Community Housing and Human Services Board who voted overwhelmingly last year in September to award Trent Shelter's contract to Jules Helping Hands, so we do not need to keep paying year after year only for more people to require help. Instead of Jules' expert recommendation and greater benefit, not only for people experiencing homelessness, but to the community's benefit, the Salvation Army is still currently running Trent, and Larry Stone is still lining his pockets. Who does this benefit? Not the people who need permanent shelter, and not the community, not the taxpayer. We need a homeless bill of rights, as we just heard from our... Thank you.
Next up is Sheri Barnett, then Kristi Jensen, then Dan DeBois.
I'm Sheri Barnett, and I do live in Spokane. President Wilkerson and all members of the city council. There is a thing that's troubling me. I see that we have a lot of, like, community organizers. We have a black newspaper and a Mexican newspaper, and I don't know how many different ones to splinter us and to racially profile. We're... We are one nation under God, and we want people to believe in our constitution. Before they become citizens of this country, they should study it, and they should agree to it. We should not be splintered into all these various groups, and lots of things are being built for the Indians, and this is going on. But also, right here in this state, we have a lot of new things that are going through that are very troubling. The thing that just went through where they have a hate crime hotline, where somebody is to call on their neighbor and receive $2,000. I'd like to know who's enforcing this and what kind of information and what validity is given to it, and who's going to pay for all this? And as far as, right here in Spokane, we have that big new building that was going in for the homeless and the low-income people, but they're giving... The first half of all those apartments are going to immigrants. What immigrants? Who's bringing them here? Who's paying for them being settled here? I'd really love to see answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Next up is Kristi Jensen, then Dan DeBois, then Ron LeBrun.
Hey, guys. I'm Kristi Jensen. I've been a homeowner in Brown's addition since I escaped the insanity of my hometown of San Francisco in the early 2000s, and I feel like I've never left. This is... I didn't really prepare anything for today, but I thought you guys might like to know what happened at that asinine meeting on Tuesday about the opioid problem, because I think you all left immediately. We learned that the addicts are the victims. They're really brave. We need to support them, and the biggest problem is that we have a negative stigma about them. And they want safe usage areas, which in my opinion is all of Spokane, because they do it openly without fear of repercussions all the time. And, oh, and the biggest one was, we should get our children to know how to administer Narcan and be comfortable with it, because it's the same as CPR. And since none of them were interested in my lived experience, after they all sat back and applauded their own, I thought maybe you guys would like to know some of mine. I have video of a lot of it, but my lived experience involves, let's see, a home invasion when my daughter was the only one home. My alley is a toilet. Let's see. I could go on and on. The other night, I had somebody that was outside of my bedroom window screaming from about midnight till 2:00 in the morning, making animal sounds and flopping around on the ground because they ran out of drugs. And in where, if I didn't live anywhere but a clown world, somebody would come and haul this person away. I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous. It's just, it's unacceptable. It's not compassionate at all. I could go, now they're tearing down my fence and burning it right next to said fence, and then nodding off. And, you know, in the morning, they're there with a fire burning right next to my house, and they're nodding off. So I just don't understand. I mean, this, those people on the panel and your support of them are precisely why we have an opioid problem. So...
Thank you.
Next up is Dan DeBois, Ron LeBrun, and then Eugene Knowles.
Dan DeBois, born and raised Spokane, currently Spokane County resident. Micah 7:8 says, "Do not gloat over me, my enemy. Though I have fallen, I will rise. Though I sit in darkness, the Lord will be my light. If you cave to bullies and terrorists, you embolden them. This high-volume harassment of our city council promoting antisemitism is profoundly disturbing. I am standing before you in defense of Israel's right to exist, right to defend herself, and right to go after her citizens still held hostage by Hamas. The protests are disingenuous hijacking of our social justice narrative. The demonstrations began on October 8th, the dead and dying still warm and unaccounted. Before there's any military response, the Jew haters erupted in glee at the violence inflicted on the peace dancers and kibbutz gardeners. From river to the sea is a call for the extermination of Jews. The social justice kids are passionately ignorant. In their compassion for Palestinians, they are holding the wrong entity responsible for the devastation in Gaza. Hamas has done this, and it must be forcibly removed, so they can never again wreak the death and destruction on both the Palestinians and their neighbors in Israel. No ceasefire resolution, no softening support for Israel until the hostages are freed and Hamas is removed. Anything short is giving victory to violence." Thank you.
Next up is Ron, and then Eugene Knowles, and then Kyle McCarthy.
Hi. My name is Ron LeBrun, and I'm a lifelong resident of Spokane, currently living on the South Hill. Throughout my life, between going to the library, shopping, working, picking up a mail at the post office, et cetera, I spent a lot of time downtown. And I've nearly been hit walking downtown dozens of times over the years. I've been lucky, but in 2018, my luck ran out when I was struck by a truck while legally crossing the street downtown. I'm fortunate to have walked away with only a cracked rib. What I would like the city to do to help with this is to put a ban on turning on red lights downtown. This is not a new idea. Many cities, including Seattle, have instituted similar bans in their downtowns across the U.S. with great results. A study from the Institute of Traffic Engineers in regards to a red light turn ban in Washington, D.C., saw a decrease in driver-to-driver conflicts of 97%, and vehicle-to-pedestrian conflicts were reduced by 92%. I think we can achieve positive results here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Eugene, and then Kyle McCarthy, and then Will Huelings.
Eugene Knowles, resident here in Spokane since 2010. I got a couple of points, but before I go to them, I've observed the frustration of the comments that take two minutes, and I've been coming here, well, maybe six, eight months recently. And there's no, there's no discussion, because you can't do it in two minutes. There's no debate. So these conversations keep coming up. You hear the same ones from three months ago, but, I mean, that's the way it is with the two-minute deal. Now, here are my points. Number one, it's starting to look a lot like Christmas. Say, where are we going with that? Wrong one. It's starting to look a lot like Auschwitz. That's what I meant to say. When you see these images coming back, it's like you're reading a history book from World War II. You're saying, no, this couldn't be, because these are the good guys, and these are the bad guys. Who's good and who's bad? If the image is there, something's wrong. Okay, two minutes, you ain't got much time. Okay. I'm glad we got some of this homeless talk here, but in two minutes. Spring has sprung. I was construction worker for 40 years. It's time to get out there and do something. We're not going to whack the mole. We're not going to chase these people out of the track shelter until you get something temporary for them to be in. You can't just keep chasing people around. There's a new administration in town. Let's give them the time. That's all I got to say right now.
Thank you, Eugene.
Kyle, and then Will, and then War Bear.
Hello. My name is Kyle McCarthy. I live in the South Hill, and I work downtown. I stand before you today to urge your support for a crucial measure that addresses two pressing issues plaguing our community: drug use and homelessness. As we witness the growing prevalence of these challenges in our streets, it is imperative that we take decisive action to protect the safety and well-being of our citizens. Firstly, let us acknowledge the human toll of drug addiction. It tears apart families, destroys lives, and undermines the fabric of our society.
Well, give me a whole minute. Would you hold a minute? We'll start when the music stops. Whose-ever that is, please. Please start over. We'll reset the clock. Thank you.
Well, firstly, let us acknowledge the human toll of drug addiction. It tears apart families, destroys lives, and undermines the fabric of our society. By allowing loitering for drug activity, we are essentially turning a blind eye to illegal drug use and exposing our youth to dangerous influences, jeopardizing their futures, and perpetuating a cycle of despair. Secondly, homelessness is a complex issue with far-reaching consequences. While we empathize with those experiencing homelessness and recognize the systematic issues at play, we cannot ignore the negative impact it has on our neighborhoods. Loitering in public spaces creates an environment of disorder and unsafety, and detaches businesses and residents from investing in our community. Spokane has an unbelievable number of resources available for those who want help with addiction and shelter. Sadly, we have a high population of transgents who prefer the use of drug use over these resources. Therefore, I ask for the enforcement of our no-loitering and sit-and-lay laws. These measures empower law enforcement to intervene proactively, dispersing gatherings that facilitate drugs use, and assist individuals in need of housing and support services. It sends a clear message that our city prioritizes the safety and dignity of all its residents. Some may argue that such a law is harsh, punitive, and non-compassionate. I believe it is compassionate response grounded in the belief that every individual deserves access to a safe and thriving community. It shows compassion for the family getting harassed simply by going to the park or to the public library. It shows compassion for the business owner who put up their lifesavers to start a business only to have someone defecating on the sidewalk two doors down.
Thank you.
It shows compassion for the worker trying to make a living and finding their car window smashed after completing their work shift. It shows compassion for the woman buying a cupcake at Sweet Frostings who was physically assaulted stepping out of the store and hospitalized. It shows compassion for Spokane visitors.
Sir, your two minutes is up. Thank you.
I was interrupted, ma'am.
But I did start the clock over again.
That was not two minutes.
Yeah, it was. It goes fast.
Next up is Will, and then War Bear, and then Scott.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown. We haven't talked about this yet this year, but I was out riding my bike, and it was getting dark, and over on the Howard Street Bridge in the Riverfront Park, I almost ran into a Lime scooter. Okay, so I urge Spokane City Council today and in the near future to address the concerning issue of Lime scooters and their impact on the safety and well-being of our community. I also bring this up because a friend of mine was interviewed by the media. She got ran over by a Lime scooter right out here. You guys probably know who I'm talking about. She comes in here with their service dog. She got hit by a Lime scooter and fell down and cracked her head open, and with their service dog. I, as someone that lives downtown, I've been almost ran over many times by Lime scooter riders. Actually, I've been almost ran over by little kids riding that can't even see over the handlebars. Obviously, their parents must have rented it for them, but it's a concerning issue. Also, I go outside and I look. I don't see tire marks. I mean, I go to Core Lane, and it's beautiful. It's clean. You don't see tire marks. That's what I'm getting at. So I don't know what's, I don't know why I seen the Lime scooter in the park. So maybe you guys have already renewed their contract, but I hope and pray that you do not renew it, because they're nothing but nuisances. Obviously, you guys don't make money according to the article in the Inlander, so I don't know why they're even here. I mean, if people want to get out, go ride a bicycle. Also, they need to wear helmets. I mean, that's the problem here, too. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Will.
War Bear, and then Scott, and then Kadine Ramon.
Yo ho. My name is War Bear. I'm not going to introduce myself.
I'm not going to introduce myself in my language today. You guys know who I am. I'm from Tahupebo, New Mexico. I'm also Chongku Lakota, Rosebud, and European, which means I'm mixed. I am not here to yell at you guys today. I know I've lost my temper in the past, which I'm not going to apologize for, because it's healthy to have emotions, especially when it involves oppression and trauma regarding my people. But it was out of line. So I come here today to advocate for my people, indigenous people. And I do it because I want to, but I also do it because usually I'm only, I'm the only indigenous man in the room. And that's because of the system. That's because of the institutions. That's because of oppression. That's because of the reservation system. And that's because of historical trauma that indigenous people have endured since 1491. I come and I advocate, as an indigenous man, for my people, because I am the people. I'm from the people. I speak on the topics that I speak of because most people don't know anything about it, and most people aren't around traditional indigenous people. And there are reasons for that historically: trauma, oppression, abuse, alcoholism, lack of resources, lack of awareness, boarding schools, residential schools. I mean, the list goes on. My people have had to endure far more than they ever should have, and they've been here for over 30,000 years. 30,000 years. We are First Nations, and we are indigenous people. We come before the United States. We come before your idea of sovereignty. We come before your idea of patriotism, and we come before the creation of the United States. That doesn't make us better than anyone else. All our problems matter. There are a lot, there's a lot of pain and grief in this room, but we are First Nation, and that needs to be understood, that we've been here before. Any of these problems, any of the suppression, any of these systems, any, this society as a whole, we predate it. And that's why I advocate for my people, and that's why I come and I talk every week to support them. We need to come together, and we need to put our brains together and create a future for our people, because there's a lot of pain in this room, and there's a lot of pain in this world. So I want to talk to you guys, and I want to work out solutions for my people.
Thank you.
Scott, and then Kadine, and then CJ. Scott, are you online? If you're online, can you hit star three? Scott, one more time, if you're online, can you hit star three? Okay. Kadine?
My name is Kadine, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. When I was coming into here, a man that was up here before I opened forum, maybe a couple months back, when we were still talking about the ceasefire resolution called "Every Muslim an Animal," "Less Than Animals," he said. And while I was walking down here, he stopped me, looked at me in the eyes, and said, "Do you know what they call black people in Arabic? Slaves." This is the nine-millionth time that I can note of being persecuted for being a Muslim in Spokane. But, you know, as I could go into a million stories, it's part of the much larger issue of the culture of Spokane, of the culture of this room, of the people in power, how they let Muslims, how they let people of color, how they let working people suffer and get abused. We have Bingo here with his "I Stand With Israel" shirt, showing very clearly how they feel about Muslims, how you all feel about Muslims, because the ceasefire resolution still has not been passed. We have thousands upon thousands of people dying in Gaza every day, our tax dollars. Our comrade David has spoke so many times about how Fairchild Air Force Base is one of the biggest suppliers of weapons in the United States to Israel. We have a role in this conflict. We have a role in this genocide, and there's still nothing. The people of Spokane want a ceasefire. The people of Spokane don't want to see children getting murdered, but it's clear that the people in power do.
Thank you.
CJ, and then Mackenzie Draper, and then Karen Pooley.
Hello, City Council. I'm, I'm here today to be, to be among many voices in this hall and the Palestinian people urging for a local ceasefire resolution on, against the ongoing genocidal war in Gaza. Many of us, for six months now, have been watching an imprisoned strip of refugees that were ethnically cleansed from their homes in 1948. Half of them are children, livestreaming their own indiscriminate mass murder, jettison, genocide, and famine carried out by the State of Israel. The imagery I've seen of this war on the people and children of Gaza is something I thought I'd never see, yet I can't forget it, because I know every day, me and my friends and colleagues that are grieving over this are coerced to be complicit in this horror because of our tax labor given to support weapons that are sent to bury Palestinian children under rubble. Yet this council has not joined multiple city councils across the U.S. and the grieving hearts all around the world to call for a ceasefire for six months. And now this has escalated to the point where we're on the cusp of the Middle East being set on fire with a regional war. I ask the council, please, join this global call for a ceasefire, this global call for humanity, a global call for life, a call that will allow the children of Gaza to no longer have to live under a sky of drones among rubble and their dead, but instead, maybe a childhood and a future. Thank you.
Next up is Mackenzie Draper, and then Karen Pooley, and then Lucas Yanni.
Thank you. Quite a bit of opposition to our group's determined calls for council members to issue a ceasefire statement for Palestine, as well as statements condemning Israel and calling for the withdrawal of funds and arms to that apartheid state, is that people are upset that we don't focus on our own city. Why, they sneer, don't you worry about the homelessness problem in Spokane? Why not the housing crisis? Why not Fentanyl? The answer to those folks is that we are addressing these problems, just on a different scale than they're used to. There are fundamental connections between the United States, between Spokane and Palestine, the first of which goes back to the land acknowledgement recited at the beginning of each meeting by Council President Wilkerson. Both the U.S. and Israel are colonial powers attempting to dominate the land they've stolen and wipe out the indigenous peoples who remind them that they're colonizers. Another connection is the authoritarian police state wielded by both colonial powers to repress their peoples for expressing political dissent. Neither state wants its citizens to speak out against the brutality it so freely uses. From 96 bullets pumped into a young man in Chicago under six seconds, to more missiles poured over Gaza than were dropped in the entire Korean War, Americans and Palestinians face cruel, repressive tactics. The reasons for these similarities is that because the most elite capitalist forces in this world, from Joe Biden to Jeff Bezos, have decided that the lives of the working class are cheap compared to the groundswell of their profit margins. When we protest being pulverized by the machine of capitalist progress, they feel offended. After all, why should we protest being ground into flour? But we will not stop speaking about these issues that affect all of us. We dream of a liberated world, free from colonialism and exploitation of all kinds. We dream of a free Palestine and land returned to the rightful carers of Turtle Island, from the Spokane people to the Anashinabe. We oppressed people of the world have nothing to lose but our chains. Free Palestine.
Thank you.
Karen Pooley, and then Lucas Yanni, and then Glenn Stockwell. Karen, if you're online, can you please hit star three? No, Karen. Lucas, and then Glenn, and then Tanya.
It is estimated that the defense of Israel on April 13th alone cost the United States around $1 billion in munitions, one day, money that is desperately needed here in this country. Iran has only targeted military infrastructure, and so far, no facilities, or, and no deaths have been reported thus far. This strike was in retaliation for Israel bombing the Iranian embassy in Damascus, Syria, two weeks ago, in which seven Iranian officials, including a brigadier general and two civilians, were killed. This unprovoked attack violates the Vienna Convention and constitutes terrorism. Iran worked extensively with the United States and Israel through diplomatic channels to make it known they were going to conduct a retaliatory strike, and the U.S. agreed that while it would defend Israel, the U.S. would not attack Iran and has no interest in escalating tensions. Iran's terms to avoid retaliation was for a ceasefire in Gaza. Despite this, Israel continues to attack Lebanon and Syria, conduct terror attacks in the West Bank, and ethnically cleanse Palestinians in Gaza. It is abundantly clear Israel is trying to start a regional war. I'm calling upon you to pass a ceasefire resolution. It is imperative we do anything we can to promote peace and stand against the ethnic cleansing and genocide of Palestinians. This has gone on far too long, and it's time for you to act. Israel is a supremacist, racist, segregated state built on the corpses of Jewish, Muslim, and Christian Palestinians, and fueled by billions in U.S. tax dollars every year. How many of our domestic problems could be solved by the billions we spend on aiding genocide? Our roads need fixings. Our schools need funding. Our homeless need housing. Our addicted need treatment. Who do you stand for? Ceasefire, now!
Thank you.
Glenn Stockwell, and then Tanya Comstock.
Hello, Council. I'm coming before you today. I gave a proposal to Brian Beggs in 2021 about working together to bring in the largest economic development project in U.S. history. After that meeting with Brian on September 15th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed a legislation putting $1.2 trillion on the table to fund the project. So originally, the project started during the Great Depression, and I'm talking about the Columbia Basin Project. And it was started by, by the Democratic Party, and Roosevelt and Clarence Martin. And the Democrats have, have, I've taken this proposal to Gary Locke and also Christine Gregoire, and they've went out to get the project to bring it in, but there was no money on the table. Right now, after 72 years, the money is setting on the table. So I'm going to ask, I've been to the county, Sooton County, I've been to Franklin County, Grant County, and I will be at the Spokane County to inform them, because I spoke with Kathy McMorris Rogers on April 3rd, 2023, and she didn't know about the money. Most everyone I speak to, they don't know that the money's on the table. Anyway, I'm going to be asking you to join together and work in a bipartisan project to go after that money. And I'm looking at a project location for Washington State Economic Development in Spokane. It's at, was the old Atwood Hensman Building that I used years ago in 1988 to get on the Solid Waste Project. I was one of, I was the person that initiated that. If Mrs. Wilkerson would reach out to the mayor of Seattle, I can, I can show you how you can extend the $50 million that I told Brian I could save the county.
Glenn, your time is up. Can we talk about, can I meet with you after the council tonight? To get more, your time is up. Can I meet with you after the council tonight and get your information to follow up on what you're talking about?
I'm sorry. I was in, I was around a lot of loud noises during Vietnam, and it hurt, it hurt my ears.
Your, your, your two minutes is up. Can I meet with you after council tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Last up is Tanya.
Welcome, Tanya.
Tanya, you can lower that podium with that button on the right, if you see that. Yep.
I just want to say that, that people that are in apartments right now, you know, we really need help with our bills, you know, right now, you know, because our business, you know, they, they're not letting people, you know, use their, their heat when it's, when it's cold outside, you know? And they, and, and they want, they want us to get cold in our apartments, you know? And we, and, and our, and we had some, some discount things on our phones, too, you know? But our phone companies now are taking those off now, you know, for, to put our, to make our, make, make us pay more, more money for our bills now, too. And the, and the housing, you know, we, we gave you guys a bunch of money to build more low-income apartments, too, you know? And the money is, is going to waste all the time now, you know? We need, someone needs to build a lot more low-income apartments, you know, not, not higher ones, you know? They need, the city needs to start thinking about disabled and low-income people now, you know?
Thank you, Tanya.
Yeah.
One last call for Scott, or Tracy, I think she left, or Karen. If you're online and want to hit star three.
All right. That brings us to the end. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn the legislative session. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.